Educating, informing, serving. TV keeping government honest.
Any adjustments to the agenda?
I have none.
Acceptance of the minutes of the meeting on November 25th.
A move that we accept the minutes as printed.
Second. Moved by Craig, seconded by Toby to accept the minutes of November 25th. Any discussion? Own favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. The pass, thank you. Communications and public comments. Solar project. Someone here to speak about the solar project.
This is Martha Staskis with Norwich Technologies.
Yep, welcome Martha.
Thank you, thank you Chair. So Norwich Technologies on behalf of a special purpose entity Westminster Backsolar is looking at a parcel of land west of the Seafare Lane. I sent a site plan to Mr. Hodgkins, hopefully that's been shared with you. Great, thank you. And it's not, I will say right up front, this is not the typical order in which we reach out to a town. Unfortunately, we are under a time pressure from a recent ruling from the Public Utility Commission that is going to impact these projects economically if they're not, if the applications are not filed by February 1st. So part of the PUC process is to send out an advance notice 45 days before the application filing. And my assistant Hannah Boudreaux has been in communications with Mr. Hodgkins and mentioned the proposal and we did take a little liberty here to send it out and hope that we can work with you folks to have the site designated as preferred under the Public Utility Commission Preferred Site Definitions. And so if we, I did send him a template of what many towns use for this type of situation. This is a 500 kilowatt net meter proposal. It would be. So in order to have an application submitted to the Public Utility Commission, it must be designated, under this situation, it must be designated as a preferred site for the application to go in. Other preferred sites are if it's on a landfill. And there are several other definitions, but in this case, we're seeking preferred site designation with the Select Board, the Planning Commission, and then based upon, hopefully, your approvals, we will go to the Wyndham region and ask the regional commission to sign off as well.
And why did you choose this site?
Well, first of all, it's for sale. And so our land holding entity will purchase the land and then it is, it is a wooded site and it seems it will be well hidden from any public views. So we felt that it doesn't have environmental concerns. We have had a natural resource assessment done. There is a wetland on the eastern side and we're able to avoid that in a 50-foot buffer alongside of it. Mostly, I don't think it will be seen, quite frankly.
It's wooded now, but it won't be after you put in the solar panels presumably.
Correct, correct. It will be cleared for where the solar is, but we've evaluated it with the idea of leaving vegetation along the southern boundary, well, along all of the boundaries, quite frankly.
This is a hillside, I think, from the topography, yes?
Yes.
How high is that hill? What is the?
That's a good question. I don't have that elevation. That's the first time somebody's asked me the elevation.
Want to know how high the hill is? You want to see if it's going to be seen or not, really?
Well, yeah, we ran, so you can run a view shed analysis through either rudimentary through Google Earth Pro, but more efficiently through Esri ArcView. And we did that. I actually was out yesterday taking photographs from places where we thought that it might be seen, but quite honestly, that's, there's so much variability in the surrounding terrain. Roads are more predominantly in the valley floors. I have taken photographs from the south on Goldie's Road by the town garage. I went on the eastern side of the interstate over by where the park and ride is. And then further down, there's a machine shop area on the eastern side of the interstate. And just not finding places where it will be visible. And if, or at least the entire array, you may be able to get a glimpse of it, but not the whole thing.
Susan, this is Craig.
Yep.
This is my neighborhood, actually. Actually kind of impressed that it is a wasted piece of land. I never thought anybody could develop it. I don't see, I don't see any harm in it. I live right down the road from there. It's like 800 feet there. When I first looked at it, I'm going like, well, that's just a wooded piece of land that nobody's ever used. So if you can fit it in, I agree with you. I don't think you'll see it the way I saw the drawings. It's up by the smokehouse, next to the smokehouse. And it sits up on, behind where Goodell's owns a home right there and there's a little camper, then there's a steep bank and they're up on top of that bank. I'll be surprised you could ever see it. It's really not a bad location ever to put anything that you would never, you're kind of hidden. So I think if they could take that land and do it, that's not a bad place to put it.
I thought it was on the other side of Back Westminster Road.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's behind the smokehouse building, but next to the meat packing facility.
Right. You go around the corner, Susan, and where the Back Westminster Road starts on that end, and it's almost right there. You're right there where the Back West, that's why it said zero Back Westminster Road. It's like right there, it just starts.
Yeah, I understand that, yeah.
Oh, my only question was, how are you accessing to get in there?
Well, we, there is a deeded right of way onto Seafare Lane, which is the lane that goes to the meat packing facility.
Yeah.
There is, and there's actually already a culvert, somebody's already, you know, the current landowner, I guess, has already put access to the site. In fact, our site plan shows the access a little bit too far south from what we've learned in the field. It'll be, it'll go on to Seafare and then down to Back Westminster Road.
But you're, you'll be accessing what we always thought was a, it is a, I think, I don't know if you're sure if it's a town road, but it's the road that goes up to the slaughterhouse. You'll be accessing that road and coming down.
Yeah, yeah.
Have you talked to any of the neighbors on Newcombe Road?
Well, I went up there yesterday and didn't see much action. I didn't knock on doors, I'll admit. You know, I feel that it's far enough away, it's screened, we're going to retain some vegetation there. I don't think they'll even know that it's there, quite honestly.
Martha, I got waylaid into a phone call with our last Select Board member. What about the cabin? That's on that property?
I didn't see a cabin. I saw some hunting stand. Cabin?
Who owns this property?
Let me just. Yes. Yes.
There's a cabin on that land? It's right off the access.
Right down at the bottom?
Yeah.
Hannah, do you remember that cabin? We walked in and then went up to the top boundary. Well, the cabin won't remain. You know, we buy the property, I can say that the cabin wouldn't remain.
Okay.
Because we would use the bulk of the property for the solar array.
Okay.
You got me on that one.
Yeah, I didn't see, hi, my name's Hannah, I'm, I work with Martha. I don't, we walked the property and I don't remember seeing a cabin and just going off of the listing online, I don't, I didn't see a cabin listed for that lot of land.
I saw it the spring.
Okay.
So.
We'll check it out for sure.
Yeah, I was gonna say neither here nor there, I guess, at this point.
Thank you for that heads up.
I guess my feeling is I would not want to vote on it one way or another so quickly before you've actually talked to some landowners.
Okay.
From Road. I know you're in a hurry. I don't really like being pushed on these things, so that's my feeling is that.
Well, I tell you, I tell you what, excuse me for interrupting you.
No, go ahead.
Mostly, I, I was uncomfortable, or I am uncomfortable in sending out, you're gonna get it, if you haven't gotten it already, you'll get it, you know, US mail, we mailed it on Monday, so maybe tomorrow, Friday, you're gonna get a letter that is called the 45-day advance notice letter. And I'm just uncomfortable sending that out before we've had these conversations. However, in this case, we're against this February 1st deadline. And so I would certainly appreciate being on your future agenda. We will go and talk to the neighbors. I just really didn't, if I don't send the 45-day letter out this week, we won't be able to get our application in before February 1st.
So you didn't, you didn't know this was coming up? Is that a surprise to you? Is that the idea?
Yeah, that board ruling came out in October, or November. We didn't know what it was gonna be.
Anybody have any more questions?
I think I would agree with Susan. I've been looking at it, I'm Googling it. I don't see a cabin, but it is, it does border on the backside closer to Newcombe's Road than I thought. So I think I would agree with her that you should contact those people.
Sure. I'm happy to do that.
Outside that, I don't have a problem.
Okay. Do you want to table this to the next meeting then? Unless I'm hearing anything different? Great, thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Yeah, thank you Martha, thank you Hannah.
Yep, bye now.
Bye.
Thank you.
SEVDS, Kristi and Sarah.
This is Sarah, I think. Hi, it's actually Chris, or sorry, my name's not Chris. It's actually Sarah and Jen. Jen's gonna kick us off.
I am, I am. Sorry if I start sneezing again, I'm allergic to today, it turns out. So I'm gonna jump right in, thank you for having us. We sent ahead links to our annual report and a copy of the impact statement. The basics are BDCC is your regional development corporation. Our work is guided by a strategic plan that's developed by SEVDS with their Southeastern Vermont Economic Development Strategies. The funding that we seek from towns makes it possible for us to take a more diversified and kind of proactive approach to economic development. This, what that means is a lot of the programs which we do, which most other regional development corporations aren't able to do. And Sarah's gonna touch on some of those in a minute. It also means SEVDS is really a lot of research and doing policy advocacy. One of the pieces of research that we do now is called hiring needs assessments because the state data is not very granular and not very sensitive to our employers here. And so we do them sort of just for specific occupational slices. You know, one example is our medical employment needs are very different because we have such a high proportion of mental health facilities. And so the state data really kind of masks our high need of workers at places like the retreat and some of the related organizations around. One of the ones that we just completed was for CDL drivers. That's obviously of particular interest because around the Rockingham Westminster area, it's a real logistics focused area, a lot of jobs in that. And so, you know, we publish that for ourselves to guide our partners to make sure that all of the educational and training partners around understand at a more specific level. I encourage you to look at that. We surveyed directly employers, not just specifically in logistics, but also like town garages and, you know, DPWs, as well as public transportation and a lot of other organizations that hire people with that. We use it to inform what we're doing in terms of workforce, to make sure that people, we try to get more people into those jobs in the field. We also use it for policy advocacy and frankly, pushing on regulatory problems at the state level. I won't go into it, if you're in the sector, you know this, but there are some real issues in Vermont around the licensing that actually make it harder to get in and more expensive to get into that field. So that's one example. We did three of those last year, we'll do two more of them this year. And on the subject of people, we get asked every town, what do you do for our people? I always need to make the point that the majority of people in most towns, unless you're Rockingham and definitely Brattleboro, work in another town. So it's, it's really important, you know, to sort of just emphasize that we work in the entire region and last year alone, we gave support to provided services to employers that provide 25 to 35% of the jobs in the entire region. I will point your attention to the town impact report. We are, you know, working hard to provide more granular data by town. One of the silver linings of COVID sadly is we have a lot of that data because through relief programs, because they're publicly funded, we are able to sort of share a little bit more about what's going on in specific towns. But I do just want to mention another kind of specific thing about a program before I get into the COVID stuff for a moment, which is kind of in the high school programming. So we've, we've been kind of right ahead of the curve in terms of pivoting towards digital stuff. We're used to doing it. Sarah's kind of expert in that and has led the way and trained up a lot of our staff, frankly, if I'm honest, about sort of how to put on webinars, how to really facilitate things on Zoom more fully. So we've switched our high school programming to that and also been helping guidance staff do some of that, creating video content. And like right now in Bellows Falls High School, there is, this week, there's a really lovely STEM panel that it's connecting regional health professionals with the students in this class with this particular marvelous science teacher. And we'll be putting a blog out about that, she's sort of fabulous and we're trying to get more teachers to do this sort of thing. So around the COVID relief, I think what, it sort of highlighted something that we already do, which is a lot of work with a lot of small businesses and nonprofits, but with COVID, we've worked, what happened last March is we sort of pivoted right away towards just being a resource information. Everybody was confused, what was the federal government doing? Who could apply for PPP? Should we do that? Do we have to shut down? So just in that sort of general information, providing technical assistance, we've worked with over 440 organizations and businesses because we just took a bunch of program staff who couldn't do their jobs for a while, you know, because they worked with high schoolers or with workforce training and just had them just do that and make phone calls and emails and we put on webinars, just make sure people are getting some information. To us, a sign of success on that is that when it comes to at least state relief, Wyndham County, on a sort of a per jobs basis or sort of a, you know, proportional basis, has received the second most, second most relief in the state. And we're really proud of that. You know, we think that has everything to do with making sure that all the local nonprofits and organizations have resources, understand what's going on, know how to go after help, you know, and get it. And we still do that. We're still putting on, you know, four webinars a month and making sure that's all available. To get specific, your impact report, excuse me, we, there are two businesses that we work with specifically in Westminster around sort of technical assistance on relief. There are two businesses in Westminster that are part of the Restart Vermont Technical Assistance Program, which BDCC administers. We administer it here to businesses. We also are running it for the entire state because we're good at running programs. We administer the CDBG program for the entire southern half of the state and we provide a lot of support and technical assistance to businesses around PPP and IDOL. Not every single one, but I do have sort of listed here, you have, there are 27 Westminster businesses that participate in the Paycheck Protection Program, which is the federal lending, those are to the tune of $1.2 million. And they employ 179 people and then there's four more firms that receives the larger loans. And then seven that receive very large loans between 250 and a million. So that's, it adds up to several hundred jobs. I'm gonna leave it at that and let Sarah just sort of talk to you about some very specific programming, things that are ongoing, both in terms of serving communities and some other key initiatives like welcoming people. So I'll turn it over to Sarah here.
Thank you. So one of the main things I focus on is running the Southern Vermont Economy Project and one of our main initiatives this year, it was running a project development series, which includes four trainings over the course of a year. Project stewardship, financial management for projects, project management, and then grant writing. We just held the grant writing workshop. Again, all of these were supposed to be in person. We seamlessly transitioned into virtual, you know, something that would maybe be a full day. We sort of spread it out across three days. So, you know, I'm sure we've all experienced Zoom fatigue and sitting in front of our screens. And so our grant writing workshop was three days. They were half days or spread out across that. And we had about 30 participants participate in that. We also put on weekly, sorry, monthly webinars. We have one coming up next week, which is on the Integrated Property Tax Management System, their upgrade project. And that's December 17th. And we'll be, we try and do one a month on different sort of topics and initiatives that, you know, are sort of good to know about. And then also, we typically do, our biggest event is our Southern Vermont Economy Summit. We had to cancel ours in 2020 due to COVID, it was equally hosted, about 250 people. Obviously, that wasn't. But we have relaunched it for May 2021, virtual, of course, just to be safe. And that's May 12th through 14th. And again, it's sort of going to be sessions spread around a couple of days, so we're not all sitting at our computer for three days straight. Also, I run the Southern Vermont Young Professionals. That's, you know, a networking group for 20-something to 40-something year olds. We put on events each month. Again, we had to go mostly virtual, but sort of the newest development with that group is that we put together a professional development scholarship fund, so, so young professionals can, you know, competitively apply for this and potentially get up to $500 towards a certificate, a class, a training, you know, anything, whether it's to grow their career they have or, you know, obviously we've been seeing, you know, during the pandemic, changing their career. And then lastly, just on the note of welcoming people, I did notice that on your town website, you have a new residence page, which is awesome. I'm not, haven't looked at it yet, but, you know, we're a huge proponents of providing information to new residents that they need, especially coming to state. I think, you know, there are a lot of unique things about Vermont towns. And we launched the Southern Vermont Welcome Wagon chapter, which is part of the Welcome Wagon, a statewide initiative, but we host the one here from Benning, Wyndham County, and it's connecting hosts, local hosts that sign up and say, yes, I want to connect new people and new people moving to there is signing up and prepare them. And it can be anything from a phone call to, you know, potentially post-COVID, you know, having them over for dinner or going to hike with them, you know, any sort of, just making connections in the community. And I think we all know that's really important here, really feel like part of the community is getting to know people in the community. And so this is a sort of real slow ass way to just really start to dig with people who are moving here, with people who want to, to welcome them. So I'll end there and happy to answer any questions. And again, just to remind you, our annual report, like Jen said, is on the website. That was published a month and a half ago and that's a lot more detail and photos and graphics.
Things that work you're doing is really important, especially now, so. Yeah. What's the status on, so you're asking for, how much are you asking for? $9,000?
$9,534.
That's usually asked for and we usually give you less, oh, worse. But what is the, and how does that work this year, Russ? Or requests?
They are petitioning and have got the signatures in. So on the warning, their article will have $9,534 on it.
Okay. Any questions? From the board?
Yeah, I have a quick question. This is Kevin Hughes, how are you?
Good.
Thanks for what you do, just quick. What kind of development are you guys doing with your process, given what just happened with COVID? With online training program, you know, all over the country, you've got Syracuse University, for example, you can get a law degree online, I don't have to leave the state of Vermont. Masters of Business Administration, nursing, cyber, AI, operational, compliance control, all these things now are online and come from universities, whether they're within the state or not within the state. And all the stuff you guys do is great. But increasingly, if you want to be part of the next generation of the bureaucratic, next generation operational system, that's now going to be more and more and more prevalent for elected in office. Three days at the office, two days at the office, no days at the office.
Yeah.
It seems to me that we should be focusing resources, perhaps, onto those programs and perhaps you guys can collectively use your offices and your resources to start structuring programs where Vermont residents can get real meaningful next generation technical and professional training from universities all over the country. And it seems to me that that is the future in CNM. I just thought I would throw it out there, but again, I think everything you guys do is terrific. Thank you for your time.
Yeah, thank you. And I just want to say, I didn't mean to talk that much about workforce stuff in part because it's in, it is in a weird place right now, but it's a huge priority. Our boss, the director of the organization, Adam Grenold, is, has also been the head of the State Workforce Development Board. It's a huge area of concern, he's on the State College Trustees Board because this is like, you nailed it, like this is where it's going. And we want to make sure, you know, for instance, a lot of people are unemployed, they are entitled to have tuition help and training dollars to help them access wherever they want. It doesn't have to be like at a local college. And, and there's not enough resources to help people even know how to use that right now. Like DOL is so flat out. So like that's, like this week's topic of conversation is like right where you are. Like how do we make sure that people understand how to use their benefits to do that career transition using whatever the best resources are out there? So I'm not going to say we have an answer to this because we also don't understand where the federal funding is going to go after this. After the last recession, there was a whole bunch of actually great, really flexible money called tax money and some really cool stuff happened. We were able to like do cohort things where we brought people from all over, they didn't have to be unemployed, they could just be employed and they could get great classes, basically designed around the local employment demand, you know, and that was a thing. Flexible dollars like that usually don't happen except after a crisis. So we're sort of like waiting to see if we get that again, for instance. So, yeah, no really brilliant answers for you on that, but you are right on it. Thank you, thank you so much.
I just wanted to add, I just, I wanted to add to that and I appreciate your response that you also are aware that a company, for example, small to midsize companies, they will pay, especially for a young professional. There's a tax benefit also to that, to an LLC, depending on how you structure it, especially for CPAs, which have, there's a lot of work out there for CPAs, that's a good job. That's a, or people aspiring to be CPA. And you guys, if you coordinate your work, I just think if you coordinate and get that on there too, you could be working with a lot more people already established that are trying to grow or network that already have personnel or seek personnel and they're willing to use private money because they get the tax advantage and they want to, they want to sustain and get people they train. And can we keep? Thank you. I just wanted to throw that out.
No, that's awesome. And that's so encouraging to hear. We kind of send that message out to the high schoolers we work with too, especially like, there's a third way. Like, you don't have to take on debt and just go to college and you don't know what you're doing. You don't have to just go to the grocery store. There's a third way that's, you know, like, and, and just identifying, you know, we know about some of them, but not about all of them. And, you know, there's, so, yes, it's, it's, that is, that is such a key thing because like so many kids end up with no, you know, it's like 70, some crazy number. It's like 60 or 70% of Vermont, of high schools in Wyndham County, five years after high school graduation, do not have a degree. They may have started at college, half of them do, but enough of them drop out that we are ending up with, like, you know, more than two thirds of the kids after five years have no degree and some of them have debt and no degree. So, you know, there's, that third way is so important.
Yeah. And Kevin, I just want to touch on something a little tangential to that is, you know, I, I do agree. I think, you know, people are starting to realize the benefit of remote working or remote education. But obviously, you know, not to beat a dead horse, you know, connectivity is, you know, a huge barrier to that in our rural communities. And I, you know, I hope everyone's heard of or aware of the communication union districts that have been growing in the Wyndham region. And, and our organization have, have been hosting connectivity summits over the past three or four years to really sort of just get people together to start these conversations, which have led to sort of this, this union of towns around this district. So, you know, no answer for that, but it's a thing in progress.
Thank you for your efforts.
Susan, can I get Christie's name? This is the recorder.
Hold on. It's, I, I changed my name. This is Jen Stromson. I'll write my name in here. Sorry.
Thank you.
Okay. Unfinished business, the draft budget, outstanding items, trash recycling.
We have Joe Rogero on this evening to talk to you about his extension of his contract. I'd like to, to open with that tipping fees that he has proposed are a lot less than what Wyndham Solid Waste Management District in Brattleboro is paying right now. And that's for this year. So, that being said, Joe, if you want to add?
Can you hear me? Okay. Yeah, I was just here for some questions. Basically, the only one, the 3% of like the cost of living cost. The only thing that did go up higher was the tipping or the recycling. But that is something that I had been worried about. It had increased drastically since the, we had talked about a proposal price. You guys were nice enough to kind of split the difference with me. So obviously now I'm looking for you to pay full cost of this recycling. The tipping fee. So that's why that's a little higher, 3%. But other than that, we just kind of went up on a 3% ratio of cost of living.
You've been doing a great job. I think you do a really good job.
Yep. Just an FYI, his total services were for collection, trash tipping fee and recycling fee as proposed for FY '22 is $244,000, where Casella in March of 2015 was $223,822. So you're looking at about $20,000 an increase for next year from 2015. And he was the closest person bidding. This is a good price in my estimation, looking at, at all of the districts around us. I would open up for, like you said, for questions for both Joe or I.
So, so the options are, we can either extend the contract for one more year. We have that option, just one. It should be an extension under the current contract. Or we could bid it out. But your opinion, Russ, is that we would do much better extending the contract? It sort of makes sense.
I, my personal feeling is, is that now seeing what Wyndham Solid Waste Management is paying for tipping fees, this is significantly lower than what they're paying in the form of $110 a ton to $138 a ton. Why you see an increase so large on our, our budget sheet is because of, I had to take into consideration the increase in tonnage that we're experiencing right now. Will that go down? It's hard to say. It, it depends on COVID-19 and how folks go back to work and if they go back to work. Folks now are really digging in and that remote access is, is the thing of the future. So people are working from home. And so I think our tonnages are what we're going to live with for the next few years.
Or trash when they stay home? I guess so.
Absolutely, absolutely. They used to dump their trash at work and now they're home. So.
Well, I guess I would be in favor of extending the contract for a year. What all do you think?
I definitely would be in favor of doing that. Yes. We've got great service and, yeah.
Anything else from the other board members?
Sheldon, I'm in favor of it.
Thank you, Sheldon.
I say I've been dealing with, I've been dealing with his competition and I, I asked him and several others. And everybody's so busy in that trash business. I don't think anybody else was looking for new customers. So I think we should take what we have. The only thing I was going to ask Joe was, we haven't seen anything in writing lately about how we are doing it recycling. Is there a way that we could get our customers to recycle better or, or to improve? Or this is where we're at, we're doing the best we can do? That'd be the only.
I think with, the way you have it set up now with that one bag of trash per week, everybody's very aggressive with the recycling. Because they're trying to keep down to just one bag of trash. Everything else I get as recyclable.
Do you think the system is working good?
I think it's working good. It's just that, you know, right now, everybody's home. So you're getting all the deliveries. The PS guys and the FedEx people, they're up, you know, 100 something percent as far as deliveries. Getting that up.
Yeah. Does someone else have a comment? Yeah. Do we, we don't need to vote on that? Or do we, Russ?
Nope.
Okay.
Thank you, Joe.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Well, thank you for the opportunity. Everybody stay safe.
Yep. Westminster West Library Budget Increase Request. Lisa, that must be why you're here.
That is why I'm here. Thank you, everybody.
Do you want to introduce yourself?
Yes, Lisa Kavanaugh from the Westminster West Library. And we have been working hard during this past year to raise some funds to get automated. And what that means is that our collection will be available online and that you would be able to access your, actually, we're hoping to join a consortium called Catamount. So, which is the same group that the Putney Library and the Brattleboro Library belong to. So essentially what it means is that rather than just having the 8,000 volumes that we have here, you, we would have access to all of the volumes, all those 20 libraries have access to. So we, you would be able to, from the comfort of your own home, go online and check out whatever books you might be interested in. And then through a courier system, they would show up here at the library. Like I said, currently we have 8,000 volumes. And when we're a part of this group, we, you would have access to 500,000 volumes.
So it's like, sort of like interlibrary loan, but you don't have that at the moment?
We have interlibrary loan, but this is a much more efficient system for that. And it will be much faster and can handle a larger volume. So, you know, especially right now with the pandemic and like the person before said, we don't know how long this is going to go on for. I think it would be extremely useful for us to be able to do, we have, we are open currently, but with very limited access. And I've been doing a lot of curbside. And in this way, people would be able to access so many more books. Right now, you know, there are a few brave patrons who call me and say, just put a bag outside full of books that you think I might like. But since we're not automated, nobody knows what we even have on the shelves. So it would be quite a big step for us as a library. And I also feel that it would help us serve you guys over on the other side of the ridge line in a different way. I know that many people are paying for memberships to libraries in Putney or in Rockingham currently. And they're not cheap, those memberships, because they need more access to books. And we would now be able to offer that to you guys. We have a small committee that has been working on this for quite a while. And one of the things that we have talked about is maybe when we are able to, to finish all this, to send out a townwide invitation to everybody so that they know that they can utilize these services, you know, regardless of whether they're in West West or Westminster. We have been able to. Sorry?
Brad, someone hasn't muted their mic. Go ahead.
We, we have been able to fundraise for most of the money so far to be able to start up this project, which means, you know, we need to buy laptops and scanners and barcode printers and things like that. So what we're asking the town for is the ongoing cost. And of course, it's an estimate, but it's an estimate that we have, you know, spent some time figuring out.
And so how would that, so you were asking for $7,000 extra online? So next year you would need 7,000 and next year you would need 7,000. And how does that break down? You, is it a subscription sort of to, and what happened, what would happen if next year, if we voted, but the next year we decided not to give it to you? Then would you have to pull out of the network?
We wouldn't be able to pull out, but we would have to do a lot of fundraising, a lot more fundraising than we already do.
Right. So what is the, what is the cost to join the network? So there's like a fee, right? Or is that what I'm?
Yeah, the fee, I'm not sure.
I can answer that, Lisa. This is, my name's Amanda Skoll. I am the co-chair of the West West Board of Trustees, the Public Library Board of Trustees until tomorrow. Tomorrow is my last library board meeting. So the fee to join Catamount is relatively low. It's about $350 just to, for joining. But once we join the network, basically all of our records that we create will be part of a shared online system. And so part of the Catamount contract indicates that if you leave the network, there is a substantial cost to them to extricate us from their system. And they charge you basically by the record to get out of the network once you've gone in. So the ongoing cost that we're looking at is that Catamount has specific requirements for, for example, how many hours the library needs to be open in a given week. And their requirement is higher than what we are currently open, I believe. Lisa and Rachel, do they, they're requiring 15 hours a week and we're currently only open 13 hours a week? So there's, there's salary costs involved. We expect there to be possibly additional courier costs. Right now, the courier only comes once a week. But when we possibly have people requesting significantly more items, we might need to up that to twice a week. And then there's ongoing supplies for, you know, barcoding and, and, you know, anything that, that gets added to the collection at that point, you know, will need to be added to the system. And, you know, there are supply costs as well. So I think that, that one thing that's, that's very particular to us this year is that really all of our extra fundraising has gone into the startup costs. As Lisa mentioned, they're, they're about $7,000. We have a lot of technology to purchase and, and extra hours that need to be done. And we've been very lucky with volunteers giving us their time. So, I mean, that being said, you know, next year, if we didn't get the, the money to cover the ongoing costs, we could, we would have to do some fundraising. But right now, it's not possible for us to fundraise the startup costs and the ongoing, and the ongoing costs and our operating expenses. Because the, the current appropriation only covers about 30% of our operating expenses. So, you know, we understand that it's a precarious place to be in if we have to make this ask every year. And we know that, you know, it might not happen every year. But we, I mean, we can hope that it will and, and we, we can cross the, the bridge when we come to it. We don't think all is lost. But, you know, that's, that's kind of where we're standing right now is that we've, we've already raised about $7,000 this year. So we, we definitely won't be able to double that fundraising amount for this year.
Another important, Rachel Cohen on the Automation Committee that put together the proposal and has been doing a lot of the work to prepare to join Catamount. I think an important way to look at this and what we on the committee brought to the Board of Trustees to make the decision to, to take, undertake this project is that right now the Westminster West Public Library is a very small, vital, but narrowly used service. And once we're automated and join the Catamount system, the Westminster West Public Library will become a valuable service for all of Westminster. It will, it will become a public library like, like Putney, like Brattleboro, that can serve the whole community. And just the, the tiny number of books that we have on our shelves and the tiny space that we have available there will expand in, in the way that a digital access can provide. And that's really the justification for increasing the hours, the hours that the library is open, increasing the hours that our librarian, Lisa, is paid for her work. So that the, all of the patrons, we expect to have many, many more patrons join the library as soon as we're, we're in the system. Because then the library will be able to do a huge amount of beneficial work to provide books for the whole community. And to me, that's really the argument of, right now, it's an obscure lovely little library that is very nice for the immediate community, but doesn't really serve the whole town. And once we're automated, it, it will be as useful a library as, as any of these larger towns have.
I think Kevin wants to say something.
Oh, no, I'm fine.
You're all lit up.
So the options would be, if I'm correct, either putting it in the budget, not doing anything, putting in the budget or making it an article? Is that the, am I correct there, Russ, or no?
You're, you're.
Can we say that again, Susan? I'm sorry.
I said, so the options are that we don't do anything or we put the $7,000 into the budget, the regular budget, or it, we, it becomes an article. It becomes an article, but we don't require signatures.
Right. By history, this would be one that you would request them to, to put as a article in, in front of the taxpayers to okay the, the additional charge. And after three years, it would become, you know, part of the budget. So that, that's typically what happens. You of course have the right to do whatever you want with this. You can, you can add it, you can deny it, or you can have them go in front of the taxpayers and okay, have it okayed.
Yes, that would be my preference, making an article.
My question is, I guess, is how did, how is this going to affect or, or partnership with the Butterfield Library in town?
Currently, the Butterfield Library has gotten automated, but they are not part of any larger group of libraries. I don't know that it's something, if it's something that they're interested in doing. We were, we were supposed to have a meeting with the Board of the Butterfield Library recently, but it hasn't happened yet. But we are looking to do some kind of networking in the future.
Great.
Madam Chair, this is Alice Gazziano.
Go ahead, Alice. Thank you.
I would like to know the total amount that the library in Westminster West will be asking for, including any budget line items and this additional $7,000.
$15,400.
So that would be an annual request then from this time on?
That's correct as I understand it.
All right. Thank you.
But we're back to the 84. We've already, as a select board, decided, well, we could actually not decide, but we decided to put that in. Normally when we almost have to go up this much is because you're asking for the money, even though it's for the library. I kind of agree with Sue. It's for a totally different use. And normally I always feel comfortable that you go to the voters and ask for it. And then if they say it, then we put it in every year after that. Because you've already said this is going to be earmarked for something different than what we normally do, I guess.
So Craig, just to be, to be clear, they did go in front of the taxpayers three years to get from 4,200 to 8,400.
No, that's why I'm agreeing with you. So the 84 stays there. They would only ask for the seven.
That's correct.
Only the seven as an article.
Right. Yeah. The 84, we've already granted it to them and they're fine with that. It's just, the seven is really earmarked. They would actually ask for an article and if it passes, it would go, eventually it would be earmarked for 15,400 a year after that.
I would just make the distinction, just to be clear, that the, the actual process of automation and, and the costs involved in the automation itself, we have already fundraised for. So the additional 7,000 is that what lib, what regular library operations look like after automation will be different. And they will require mainly more librarian hours. So that's a, a big chunk of it. And the, the fact of the matter is also that Lisa's amazing and does a significant amount of work on volunteer time because we already do not pay her for as many hours as she works. So I just want to be clear that the, the 7,000 that we're asking for is not for the process of automating and the project aspect. It's for what our operations will then look like once the project that we've already fundraised for is complete. Just to make sure that that is.
I understood that. I guess my, my other question, if I can follow through on it, is what is the relationship with this library, with the school library, with what's going on with it? Is there a relationship where maybe part of this would be to help them out, seeing that their schools are still closed a lot more than they're open and that what is going on with the school library? Is there any kind of relationship there?
No, we don't have any relationship with the school library because they're, that's a, they're under a different entity. So that would involve conversations with the school boards and, and things like that, that we, we are not. That being said, I mean, in normal, in normal times, whatever normal times look like, Lisa does provide a significant amount of, you know, after school programming and the homeschool group meets there. And obviously, you know, the, the library has become a, a bit of a meeting place for, especially for children in the area with families since the West West School closed. So, you know, we don't have an official affiliation or, or connection to the school library. And I'm not entirely certain that they would even be open to such a thing because it is such a different sort of entity. But I do think that the community, the library has been serving the community in exactly that way that you're talking about of, of kids being at home and, you know, the, the picture books are still flying off the shelves. The easy readers are still flying off the shelves. And it's actually been a really important lifeline, I think, in that regard.
Thank you.
Well, what's your pleasure, Board?
We can grant them, so we could grant them permission to do the article without signatures is really what we'd be doing.
Right. I think that's, that's what I would like to see them do and make their case to the, I think they have a very good case before the town voters. I'm hoping they're able to in a, depending on the, what the town meeting was doing. But go ahead. Are you going to say something Toby?
I know. I just said, I agree with what you're saying. Exactly. Yeah.
It's very interesting. Yeah.
So I don't think you need a motion on that. They just need to know that we would actually put them, we would let them drop the article to put as a warrant or do we need a motion?
They have to drop the article, right?
Right.
Yeah.
You should have a motion to, to grant them permission to be on your warning, just to be very clear.
Move. I still move that.
I'll second it.
Moved by Toby, seconded by Craig, that we give the Westminster West Library Board permission to add their article to the town, town meeting warning. All in favor? No one's opposed, I don't think. Okay, great. Good.
Can I just ask, when do you need the, the language for the article?
It's got to be posted and it should be in the town report. And she's asking for everything before Christmas. So you've got a couple of weeks.
We'll bump that to the top of the agenda for tomorrow night, I guess. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for coming. Appreciate it.
Thank you all.
All right. Equipment, equipment budget.
We have left it that we're going to need to discuss whether we add another 15,000 to the equipment budget request line. Because machines have gone up and that we are running a deficit, as you know, this year. It's a discussion that we really haven't had and so I'm willing to listen.
I, I, I did go and meet and look at that truck that you got, that we were looking at or bought. Maybe 145 might be a little high, but you, I think 140 I'd be more comfortable with.
What form does the deficit take? Well, I don't understand the deficit. Could you explain it?
The deficit was explained to you folks that we were going to steal from different line items in Chuck's budget to pay for the overture of the truck that we purchased this year.
Okay.
Equipment budget, that was the deficit.
Yeah.
That's correct.
I mean, and you were telling me with the two things we were going to buy was a.
The two items that are, are up for discussion on renewal are this six wheel dump truck and the backhoe. We will not get them both done in one year. They're just under discussion of which needs to be replaced. And we're still working with Craig to get up a list so that you'll have a history of, of what's proposed in the years to come.
Yeah. See, that would be really useful instead of just putting the same amount in every year.
Yeah, we'll take all seven vehicles and each vehicle will have a date when it's, when it's due to be and basically how much money we would need to cover that on those seven rigs is what we're doing.
I think that would be great.
Susan?
Yep.
Question for Russ. How many hours are on the backhoe?
Not off the top of my head, Craig, Sheldon, but I can, I can find that out for you.
So what's our feeling about the 145,000 in the equipment budget?
Like I said, 140 would be fine with me, but that's, that's up to you guys.
No, 140, 145. Go ahead, Sheldon.
So last year, the six wheeler was 100, we had budgeted about 120,000. So in a year's time, it's gone up $20,000.
No, last year was a tandem. It was, and we budgeted 130 and it was actually more like 145, 150 actually. Because they went from a six wheeler to a ten, they went from a small one to a big one. This year it's a small one for a small one.
But we budgeted for a six wheeler last year.
That's correct.
Did we not? Which was $120,000 plus or minus, correct?
Yeah.
So I, I get that the 10 wheeler is 145,000, but now we're talking about 140,000 for the six wheeler next year?
It won't be that much. It won't, it won't, you're asking a budget number. It won't be that much.
Well, you said you were comfortable with 140, but that's still $20,000 more than we budgeted last year for the six wheeler.
There's a different six wheeler. Last year you traded in a little one and you on it. This year, it's a little confusing, I guess. It's the type of truck you're trading in. Sometimes what is, what equipment it has on it and everything. When I took a look at it, it might be between 120, 130 to 135. All depends on what he, I'm not 100% sure of what he's going to get. The reason is if he buys a blade, doesn't buy a blade, that's $10,000. I don't, we were look, this is a discussion of Russ and Chuck and I still got to have, Chuck normally calls that shot. But if he gets a wing, he gets a front plow blade, that's 15,000 where he could, or if he doesn't get it, then he doesn't need it.
So I guess we need some more information. Sorry, Susan. I assume that we need some more information before we can make a, a good decision on this matter.
I think we were talking about budget numbers as compared to like if you were going to go out and get quotes or bids. You see what I'm saying? On it.
So you're saying Sheldon, you want to wait to put in the budget number for more information?
Well, I don't want to get caught like we did last year. So yeah, I'd, I'd like Chuck and, and Craig and, and Russell to have a solid figure of what we're going to get, what we're trading in and so that we have a solid number to put in the budget instead of winging it again.
I guess you, you could. Yes, you could. I guess we'd have to meet with the three of us and with what this is going on, it has been a little hard. But yeah.
When can we get those numbers by, do you think?
I can give it to them by tomorrow if they, if they want. They just got to tell me, Chuck and Russ have to tell me equipment that exactly they're going to get. You see what I'm saying? But.
Yeah. We would, we would have to hold another meeting to pass the, adopt the budget. That's all. So by the deadline. So, which is okay, but it'd be nice to have, do that pretty quickly.
Or you're hoping to pass the budget tonight?
That was our hope. We don't have to though. So if you want away from more information, that's fine. And we can have another quick meeting or not quick meeting.
Kind of a, it's kind of a big pricey item to be just throwing a figure in there and, you know, we got chastised on this at the last meeting for just, you know, throwing figures at the wall and hoping they stick. So I, you know, I don't, I, I would much rather say, you know, if we're going to do that, then, then you're going to put in a figure and say it's not to exceed this period, end of discussion and go from there. But I, I don't like, I don't like doing this budget, you know, spending the time to do a budget and then, you know, have these, these big line items floating around out there and we really don't know what we're buying.
I agree with Sheldon.
So Russ and Chuck and Craig will meet as soon as they can to come up with a more specific number?
I can, yeah, I can give them a number by tomorrow if they, it was just questionable of, of Russ. Russ needs to be involved with the discussion, but Chuck needs to go over the different choices. We narrowed it down to the truck he's trading in. We narrowed it down to the basic. But when I started asking about plows and wings and blades, we have extra, are we going to keep them? Are we going to trade them in or are we going to get new ones? And it's, it's a 10, it's a good $15,000 swing with either way, to be honest with you.
Okay. Well, we'll wait for more information on that one then. Anything else on that equipment? Animal control?
We have been given a, an opportunity from Wyndham County Sheriff's to create a four town municipal entity for animal control. The four towns would get 10, 10 hours per week total, Putney, Westminster, New Fane and Dummerston. The cost for the service is about $18,500, which includes the officer, the vehicle and mileage. The breakdown for that 18.5 would be Westminster at 40%, Putney at 40%, New Fane and Dummerston at 10%, meaning our portion would be $7,400, Putney's would be $7,400, New Fane and Dummerston's would be 18.50. Additional information, the fees and penalties would go to the town to offset costs. We're also hoping for more towns to join this as we get developed and that we can show that it, it's actually working, which would lower our costs. Kennel fees we should be right up front are still going to be owned by the town. So that when we have a stray dog or whatever, we charge the owner after they pick it up. But that is by default, it's the towns. All the town animal control ordinances would have to match. Putney and Westminster's are already there. New Fane and Dummerston would have to work on theirs. As I said, as more towns sign on, if any, the fees would go down as the position would become full time at 40 hours per week would be the ultimate goal and have a Wyndham County animal control officer. My next meeting with these four towns is going to be December 22nd at 10 a.m. If anybody wants to join that meeting, just let me know. So I'm here to ask, answer any questions if you have them.
This sounds, Susan?
Yep, go ahead.
I have a question. Well, I should have more. I guess I have more than one, but so the total hours between the four towns is 10 hours a week?
That's correct.
So what's he doing those 10 hours?
In those 10 hours, he will be answering complaints, checking registrations of dogs that are not. So that if there isn't any complaints, he'll be getting lists from the, the four towns and, and making sure that the dogs that we know of are registered. And if they're not, then municipal tickets will be, will be sent to them. In the discussions, we all discussed how many hours a week do I spend? And does Jeannie Bridges spends? In the discussions, we all discussed how many hours a week do I spend and does Jeannie Bridges spends? And we are in about somewhere between two and three hours a week dealing with animal control issues of excessive barking to stray animals to animals lost, et cetera, that just a slew of things. Bites are the most time consuming. So that's what we would be doing.
Excuse me. Bites wouldn't be really controlled by the dog officer. It's still going to be underneath the health department, the health officer, is it not?
The health officer has to report it, but the follow-up could be by the animal control officer.
So put this in dollars and cents. How, how much is it costing us for what you're doing at this point in time, working with the Wyndham County Sheriff? And not getting anywhere because we haven't really got anywhere and almost the whole time I've been on the board with this, with our dog ordinances and and dealing with dogs, we haven't really made any progress on it. So I guess I'm I'm thinking this is a heck of a big chunk of change for a dog officer, but.
It it would be an additional thirty-nine hundred dollars to our budget. It we have registered the lowest amount of of dogs since Patty's been here this year. We're blaming a lot of it to COVID nineteen and lack of of people working, you know, revenue. So yeah, it's it is just an option out there. I'd love to see it work really, really well and register more than just our estimated forty percent of our dogs. It takes a lot off of my plate. Half my time, I feel, is trying to chase down our animal control officer to make sure that she's followed through appropriately with each and every party. So anyway, it is, it's an option out there.
Okay.
What's your feeling, Board?
All I can remember is when Sonia left, she met with me and said, please, please do something about the dog in town. It's taken, as a town manager, it's taken up way too much time. And you you can't believe how much time I spent and wasted. So I've always remember her saying that. And so I think I emphasized with with Russ. And I think if we could, it's like any else, if we're going to try it, let's make sure we follow through and we get reports and it's actually working. But I'm also willing to try it. If it don't, we just don't do it again.
We could try it for a year and
Yeah.
Ask for regular reports, not just at the end of the year, so we don't forget about it?
Yeah. I don't know if it's reports, it'd just be nice to have them actually come in and zoom and explain to us how they're coming on the dog ordinance and town in general. You know, why we haven't had a meeting with anybody from the sheriff's department for how long, you know, so.
But this would be a specific with dog ordinance person in the department, or would it be a deputy who has dog duties?
He's not sure exactly how it's going to set up, but he has a lot of potential people to to give this to, to fill out their their hours for the Wyndham County Sheriff. So he has people in mind, let's put it that way.
Would they actually, Russ, let's say if school was open, would they actually go in and maybe talk to kids and stuff about taking care of their dog and stuff like that? Is, I mean, is part of education going to be part of this duty?
Absolutely. And if you remember the long conversation we had with Noel Hoffman, who was a a dog trainer in our area. She has said right, right from the get-go, when she has an owner and dog team come to her office, the first session is working with the owner. You have to have the owner on on board before you can get the dog to to behave appropriately. So yes, this would be an educational position also for the public.
Thank you.
Pleasure, Board.
I think it's worth giving it a try, but I don't know. Or if we've had some disappointments, so I.
At this point, sorry.
Go ahead.
At at this point, you know, we're kind of waiting to see whether the Wyndham County Sheriff's Department is even going to live up to their contract with us for what they're doing now. I really don't want to take, have them take on yet another journey at this cost. And, you know, just as a lack to see if it's going to work or not. I think it's a off, I I'd rather pay an individual from town or I'd rather pay more for a dog officer that actually gets out and does what they should be doing perhaps than hiring somebody from out of town to take care of of problems at this. It it just seems like an awful lot of money to me for for a service that we don't know what they're going to do. So I'm, I I gotta say I'm against it.
But we've always had trouble getting a competent dog officer, so.
Yeah, but we've, we've never offered him seventy-five hundred dollars a year either.
Okay.
Why would we offer seventy-five when we're, you don't want to offer these people seventy-five? I just don't see that we have somebody that's coming in. I'm for it for what you're saying. But man, we've been through it and even when there was a bad dog violent problem, the people that were there, we had to hire the sheriff to take it and do something with it. So I I don't know, Sheldon, when you keep saying we got a choice, I don't know what choice we have.
Yeah, it's either not do anything or give this a try, I guess, or sort of limp along or give this a try for a year. So I guess I would be willing to give it a try for a year. I would like to hear, go ahead.
I do have to say that the other four towns will have to have the same conversation we're having right now and approve it.
That was my question. I say, even if we said go ahead and do it, it's pending that everybody else signs up.
That's correct.
Yeah.
All right.
They be giving us reports? Let's say we decided to do it. Would there be reports?
We we asked that question from the four towns and yes, there would be a on their website, there would be a portal that we could pull up and see exactly what he did at what time. So yes, we would have reports.
All right, you want to take a vote on this? Do you want to discuss it more?
Can we just let it ride until the other towns are, you know, since it's in a thing in process right now? There's nothing apparently.
But the other towns are going to say, what if the other towns say we're on board if they're on board? I guess somebody has to start out, but.
Plus, then we wouldn't do it till next year because we would have passed a budget without that.
Right.
Allocation in it, so.
It's a matter of whether we put the money in our budget tonight or not. That's really what the decision is.
Well, I'm not hearing any motion from the floor. So.
I'll make a, I'll make, I'll make a motion. I don't care.
Okay.
I'm not sure what you want for a motion other than to.
Add it to the budget.
Add, add seventy, I lost my paperwork.
Thirty-nine hundred more to the budget.
Add another, add thirty-nine hundred dollars to the budget for for possible contract with the sheriff's department for a dog officer? Is that kind of what you're looking at?
Yeah. Yeah, just to.
Okay, I'll make the motion.
I'll second it, but I don't think it's got to be, Sheldon, I don't think it's got to be worded to Wyndham County Sheriff, but basically if we put thirty-nine hundred, we got enough money to cover if we if we do give them the contract. Other than that, we'd use the money to hire like somebody you just said about.
All right, but I, I mean, it seems like we should decide if we're going to join the Wyndham County Sheriff's Program or not because other towns might be dependent on that. So whether you put it in the motion or not, I think that's what we should use the money for.
I don't have a problem with that, yeah.
Yeah. All right. But move, it's been seconded. Do we want to add thirty-nine hundred dollars to the line item for animal control? In favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
No.
Passes? Here we go. Thank you all for that discussion. FY twenty-two revenue.
I I would like to stop there and answer the questions that Nate Stoddard had given to you all.
Right, thank you. Okay, good.
So on page four of your budget, if you want to follow along with this. He asked about the building maintenance. He stated that the average for seventeen through twenty FYs was ten thousand one ninety-six. And he said, what is this specific work for for twenty twenty-one in the FY twenty-two budget? And we we answered to him last meeting, but we'll do it again. The town hall needs a slate roof repair. The last time we did this and waited this long, it was about four thousand dollars. The other thing that we are are working on is painting this town hall. And the last time I did this, it was a about a thirty-six thousand dollar endeavor. And if we plan this right, we could paint the the building in June, pay the remaining portion of the this building maintenance line to the contractor and pay the next section out of next year's budget so that we could get this painted without taking out either a loan or spiking the line item for maintenance. But at this point, it's it's really up in the air to what is going to get done and what is needing to be done at this point. He also asked about year-to-date spent. We have spent two thousand eight hundred and thirty-one dollars out of the twenty thousand dollars that's on that line item for FY twenty-one.
And you're saying part of that could be used to paint the town hall?
That's what it's earmarked for. Yes, that's what we've been trying to get done, but we also expected this renovation to be done by now. So now we're kind of in the middle of it all.
Okay.
Page six, he asked the question about equipment building maintenance under the town garage. He asked, is the town shop a town-owned building? He asked, what is the specific work needed? And then he asked, what is the year-to-date expense? He also mentioned that between seventeen and twenty fiscal years, the average was six thousand seventy dollars. The line item this year that we're proposing is twelve thousand dollars. Yes, the town building at the town garage is owned by the town. This budget covers five buildings to maintain, one in the west and four at the town shop. This stems from like this year from roofs, siding, lighting. We replaced the lights inside the town garage this year with LEDs. So it is whatever needs to be repaired at the time. And he has some more siding to do, but he's waiting until after any damage is done while winter is happening. So he he has earmarked, excuse me, this money for maintenance to to his five buildings. Spent to date is eight thousand two hundred and forty-six dollars and four cents.
Then you said there's going to be siding added to that?
Next spring, yes, after he finds out how much need he has after the.
You go through, will you go through the five buildings again? What do we have on the west side?
We have that maintenance building where we plug in our loader during the winter time.
Yeah.
It also, it also has the the heating system for the the loader.
Yeah.
It is, it, there's electrical maintenance that we do pretty much every year. Not a lot. It's a, it's a concrete block building, but I, it it's not just the town garage. That's what I was trying to get through that. It's five buildings.
So where's the other four? You you got the west side, you answered the west side. I get the, I I know there's at least two buildings that we're maintaining, actually three at the town shed. So where's? I've got one more building floating around out there somewhere. I guess I don't know about.
We have the town garage. We have the metal green building that is housing our our loader and and grader. We have the salt shed. And we have the the small equipment shed that's on the north end. There's four buildings there.
Okay.
Okay.
We also have to start thinking about our fuel tanks. They are they are not leaking, but they are showing signs of need and the state is starting to press, press us on the age of these things. So that will be conversations in in future years that we're going to now start needing to place at least a few dollars towards the fuel tank replacement. We have the accounts already set up and it has sixty-three thousand dollars in it, which is wood cover, fuel tank replacement, but we are not going to replace them until we we have to.
We have other.
Are those above grade at this point in time?
These are not above grade. They're going to be.
Sorry, Susan.
Oh, that's all right. We have other things we need to do to the town garage too, not just replace the tank, so.
Absolutely.
But we'll discuss that a little bit later.
Okay, on page seven, he was wondering what equipment miscellaneous and parts is for. We have above that on the sheet, we have all the equipment listed and broke out for each cost and repair. If you're looking at your budget, we were pretty loose with what we put in there for expenses for seventeen, eighteen and nineteen. It ranged from forty-nine thousand to twenty-eight thousand to forty thousand. And as you see, last year, we changed our our scope of work on that. All all that goes into that line now is items that are not specific to any one machine such as rags, bulk light bulbs, lenses for the trucks, et cetera. They're small items and that's why they're, the budget has shrunk so much in that line item is because we're not just facing everything in miscellaneous anymore. When we buy something, it goes to the equipment that we have earmarked it for, period. The next line item he asked about was on that same page and same line. It's the total and he said, good job. Page eight. Disposing of waste. Why are we not checking the cost by requesting bids? And that is the disposing of waste on the on the contract that we talked with Joe about. And I wrote, extension of contract was granted as a reasonable rate. And I wrote, extension of contract was granted as a reasonable rate as per figures given. The amounts of trash recycling per tons are way up. Hence why the flexing of this price is way beyond just the tipping fees. So it looks like we've gone up substantially on the disposing of waste, which we have. But we've also way over enticed this line item with, with tons and tons more of trash and recycling. Again, on page, if you don't have any questions on that, again, on page eight, the equipment budget. He wanted to know what piece of equipment this was planned for. And we have been talking that it was truck number two, which is a six-wheeler. And we also have plans for the backhoe. Realizing that this dollar amount does not go into surplus. This goes into the equipment fund and is carried over from year to year. This is the first time that I've ever seen that we have actually depleted this line item. Hence why we were asking for one forty-five and not one thirty.
I'm missing where you are, I guess. You said you're on page eight, but farther down?
Yeah, all the way down.
Almost to the bottom. It's in blue.
Uh, transfer to the capital fund, but that means the equipment.
Oh, you got it, okay, I've got it, thank you.
So again, we, we do not, if it's not spent, it does not just go back into the general fund as surplus. It stays in the fund so that when a machine is higher than what our proposed prices, we have at least something to cover it. If for some reason a plow blade was told that we weren't gonna replace it and in the first storm it broke and we needed another one, we have the little bit of free board to actually buy it out of that line item.
Okay.
That was all his questions.
Thank you, thank you for throwing to those for us. So can we go onto the revenue?
I'm all set.
Yeah.
If you look at your revenue, at this point, we have gone up on delinquent taxes to match a better average of what we've been doing. That is a bouncing ball. And this year, I'm, I'm happy to say that we're at fourteen point two percent of delinquent taxes this year. That is the lowest that we've had for a while. People have really come through with their contracts and they're doing very, very well. Interest and warrants, we're, we're maintaining our thirty. It looks like we're, we're right there where we should be. The eight percent is right on where it should be. So the total of that line would be one million eight hundred and eighty-nine, three sixty-five. Moving down to license and fees.
One quick question, why does the education billing fee change so drastically? The education billing?
Because that's, we won't find out about that until midway through the year. As you can see, FY twenty-one hasn't even stated anything yet. So we're not there yet. It comes to us and sometimes it's negative, as you can see, and sometimes it's positive.
Okay.
Uh, license and fees. COVID-nineteen election grant was, was added into there. That's why the big difference, but we're maintaining all of those levels that we have. Except for zoning permits, we seem to be carrying over a little bit more every year. We're in the four thousand, forty-five hundred dollar range, so we bumped it by five hundred. Moving down through VLCT equipment grants, we only get those occasionally, so that's lined up, it should be zero. State aid to highways, I've confirmed that it's a hundred and sixty-two this year. State aid to paving reimbursement, we will not be eligible this year. State grant for erosion, I'm working on as we speak. That will be a possibility for next year to be done in twenty twenty-two. Uh, the railroad tax is not claimed until after this budget is due. Pilot taxes was confirmed.
Wait a minute, hold on, I just have a question for that. So, so if we don't put it in there after we pass the budget, we get the railroad tax. So then essentially that might contribute to a higher budget than we.
This is revenue.
Yeah.
It, it, it goes into surplus.
Right, so.
But again, we don't know this number, so, and it could, it could disappear. It, it hasn't, as you can see, it hasn't yet, but this year we haven't received it yet.
Great, no, I, I understand that, but I, I think that's part of the whole discussion about surplus and where it comes in, that might be one of the factors, small, but part of it. Okay, keep going, sorry.
So pilot, they confirmed that we would get fifty-four thousand dollars this year. Um, VLCT equipment grant, we haven't received for a while, we haven't needed anything in that line. State of Vermont Hold Harmless, which is current use, was confirmed at a hundred and six this year. So you can see that that line item is up about twenty-eight thousand dollars in expected increases in revenue from the state. We're maintaining the town clerk's office and what they're, they're doing. We are taking a small hit on what their proposal was last time, but it's, it should be on course now. Going through, back to the items, a rental of post offices is a long-term contract, so that stays the same. Tax reimbursement is the same, hence that.
Can we just go back a minute, Russ? So we say transferred from the rainy day fund. I think we don't use that word anymore. Rainy day.
That line can be removed from this document.
Really?
It hasn't been used since that date.
We try not to say that word, so, okay.
Get it out of there.
That would be good. Emergency reserve, that would be good. Okay, sorry, keep going.
Local ordinance fees, again, they've dropped significantly from what we were used to. Um, this year we will be making our approximately the eight thousand, hopefully. We're on, on board to do that, so we've kept it the same. Hoping it will go up, hopefully, hopefully, but we're not sure.
Oh, can you, oh wait a minute, I'm sorry, I have one more question, go back to the other page. Sale of town property, doesn't that nineteen point one acres come in here somewhere? You know, the nineteen point one?
Yes, but we haven't sold it yet.
So where would that show up, in next year's revenue?
In next year's revenue, probably. Well, it depends, it, it will come in this year if we do it before June thirtieth.
So that would be.
Right now, we have issues with the right-of-way, as I told you.
All right.
We'll also be talking about Davidson Hill property, putting it on the market next spring.
Yep. Just wondering where these figures show up, is, that's my question. So, all right.
Fuel reimbursement, it's always been the thousand. Interest earnings, you can see we bumped that significantly because we are showing that the new investments with banking is paying off. I, I don't know if we're splitting it up the way we used to, but it is all being placed in there, which is fine. It's showing its interest, so we bumped that one significantly, as you saw, ten thousand dollars. Cemetery fund's been maintaining itself. Lot sales from one year to another, it's from zero to, to three or four, we really never know. Miscellaneous revenue is a bouncing ball, it, it all depends on what has come in for from some unique item, one, one time per year. Reimbursement of fuel from the fire department is been, been relatively stable. Sales of materials, which is books and, and et cetera, has, has really dropped off in the last few years. And workman's comp was back in FY twenty, it was the, the employer, employee got a check that we had already reimbursement for, so we put it back in there, but we're not anticipating that this year. And then with the final discussions of, of budget coming in January, you'll figure out how much you want to give back to the taxpayers, if any. And that would be in the year-end, end-of-year surplus line.
Well, we want to discuss that now, right?
You don't need to, but you can.
Well, let's.
Okay.
We have, give us the numbers, so we have four hundred and something. Just get started on it.
Hello?
Hello, I wasn't figuring on doing this this evening, so I would have given you copies of the, the surplus with the breakdown, but I'm working on it.
You know, it's, I was gonna bring that up, as, as long as I've been here, it's, we work so hard every year on expenditure when Nate was going after us to be responsible for the members and we keep looking at expenditure and taking five thousand or two thousand. But every year when we end up with that surplus, it's because our revenue estimate was so far off, which is, we don't spend much time on it because we really don't have much control over it, you know? We only really have control over expenditure. But when they come back and say, you know, why you, you're, you know, you didn't run a good budget because you're way off on your, you've got so much money left over, it's always because we got some money in that we weren't really counting on, didn't know where we were gonna get it or not, you know?
Right, I mean, there's two of those line items we just talked about, one is the railroad tax.
Yeah, I mean, the last year we, we were talking about when are we gonna get the money for the login? And where are we gonna get the money from the, from the police barracks? Because we had no idea what we were gonna get. But all of a sudden you start taking ten, twenty, thirty thousand, it, it always seems to come into the revenue side, not the expenditure side.
Well, the sale of the town property, that's twenty-four thousand, if that goes through, that, that would show up in a surplus next year.
But, but they come after us every time, it's like, you put too much money into your expenditure of your life. Like, no, we, we probably were a lot closer than we ever, than what we thought we should be. It's just that we all of a sudden ended up with revenue, that's what that big surplus, we keep getting at the end, you know?
Right.
So on page eighteen of your audits, if you have that in front of you, it's four hundred, it's four hundred and ninety-five thousand, one hundred and eighteen dollars, of which two hundred and fifty thousand dollars is part of that the emergency capital plan that we put together, that you were gonna keep ten percent of the budget in there. And so it worked out to be a hundred thousand was going to be working capital and a hundred and fifty was going to be for the emergency. So that leaves us two hundred and forty-five thousand, one hundred and eighteen dollars to, to decide what to do with.
So.
For town meeting.
Right. So we don't have, but I think we should at least start thinking about it or start discussing it. I mean, right off the bat, a couple, Russ and I were talking about the town garage fund, maybe putting some money into the town garage fund, some into the bridge fund. But, but I'd be happy giving a pretty good chunk back to the taxpayers. We all want to think about this for a while?
What are you thinking?
What was I?
What do you say, a pretty good chunk?
Can we give half back?
At least, I would think, maybe even, you know, if we put fifty, and this is a lot, this might become a fifteen to the bridge and fifteen to the garage fund, essentially we would have a hundred and fifty thousand, roughly a hundred and forty-five thousand. I mean, the only other thing I could think of that we really needed for is repairing that cemetery wall, but it seems to have gotten a little bit better, but. Or maybe we can fix it, I, I don't know, is that worth spending money on now or just make it simple? What do you all think?
What, what was Russ's number, was it two fifty that we would put into the reserve?
We did last year, Greg, it's already there.
So a hundred.
Go ahead.
There's a hundred and fifty that's in the emergency fund, a hundred is in the.
Working capital.
Working capital. So the total is two hundred and fifty. We could put more into the emergency reserve, but I'm not really in favor of that, but.
I'm not either, to be honest with you.
Yeah, we've got a hundred and fifty. I don't know, okay, well, we don't have to decide tonight, but I think we should think about it. Yes?
Yep.
Okay. Moving along, I guess, unless anybody has anything else. The budget adoption, we'll, we'll have to have another meeting after the equipment numbers come in.
Are we down to that one number is the only thing we're missing?
Yeah, that's the only number we're missing.
That's correct.
Yeah.
And right now, if we love that, we still, our expenditure would be down from last year.
That's correct.
I just think that before we, we get off this, if, if Sheldon or somebody, or one of the other board members want to come back and say, well, we need to shave some more off so that Russ has time to go find out where it is? Or are we, as a board, comfortable to say that outside of that one number, we're comfortable with all the rest of the expenditure? I think we should at least leave the meeting tonight with that idea. Otherwise, we're gonna ask Russ to go dig up and if somebody came, or one of the reflecting person wanted to actually cut fifty thousand out, then we would ask Russ to go work on it and come back. But are we actually, the whole board, we comfortable outside of that one budget number? I guess that's the question.
I'm not sure exactly what you're asking, I'm comfortable with the whole budget, everything we've talked about. I'm good, except the equipment number we need to decide on. That would be the only thing hanging up that I can see, from my point of view.
No, it's just in the past, sometimes when we're up one or two percent, then somebody would be looking at, let's see if we can level fund it. This is weird, you see what I'm saying? So then we would go back and say, what do we gotta cut to level fund it? In this case, we went down, so it's kind of.
Right.
Unless somebody's got some, a goal of where they want to be, I think we're down, it's, I, I guess I'm comfortable, let's come back with that one number then. That's, just throwing that out.
Right, but we would not be voting on the budget tonight, still.
Right.
Yes, okay, we would just meet for a quick meeting to pass the budget, essentially. Before, what is our deadline, Russ?
We always say before Christmas.
Yeah, okay. So, I mean, we could be, have a quick meeting next week if those numbers, numbers are in to pass the budget. Does that seem reasonable?
Yep.
Sounds reasonable to me.
Well, we like reasonable, okay, good. Okay. Everybody know what they're doing? Those who have to do something, the rest of us wait for the call. Draft of new personnel policy update.
Uh, we don't have one.
Okay, moving along. Who was, school withdrawal from consolidation update?
So in your packet, I just wanted to make sure that you all realize that the warning was in the newspaper in a timely manner. So January fifth is definitely a go. At this point in time, the clerks are and, and Board of Civil Authority are leaning towards. the clerks are and, and Board of Civil Authority are leaning towards an Australian ballot where absentees can be asked for, but we will not be mailing them out to every taxpayer at this point. So we have gotten many responses from everyone, from Mike Mariki to Will Sennings, and they're working on what the town meeting is going to look like. But right, for right now, with this school withdrawal from consolidation, we were at our own. Where all of the incentives have gone, all the directives have gone, they've, they've expired. So we are one of the only towns that has, have anything to bring in front of their taxpayers. And so, again, they've gotten permission from state that the Australian ballot is, is very acceptable.
And they're going to have an informational meeting ahead of that, right? December twenty ninth, I believe, the school.
David has, David has said that. We haven't got the, the logistics yet, but he's going to hire Fact TV to to do a Zoom meeting so that people can, can get in, in bulk and still be heard and and information brought to every taxpayer that wants to know.
Any other questions? Okay.
I have one.
Okay, go ahead.
Is that, it's Millie, is the meeting, is it twelve twenty-nine? Are you still, you don't know when that meeting is?
We're not saying, I thought I saw it in an email, but I'm not sure that it's totally set.
Okay, so there'll be more information about the date of that meeting.
To come, but the proposed date, Millie, is, is the twenty-ninth at this point.
That's the proposed date. Thank you.
Yeah. Yes, executive session will wait to go into, vote to go into that before we adjourn. That'll be quick, I think. That will be about Citizen of the Year and Town Report Dedication.
You need a motion to, to, to go into executive sessions, so.
Okay.
Should do that now.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Move and seconded.
I'm sorry, was it Kevin?
Yep.
Yeah.
Toby.
Kevin and Toby, thank you.
Yep. Go on to executive session to discuss Citizen of the Year and Town Report Dedication. All in favor, say aye.
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 Most. Okay, we'll do that at the end of the meeting. Town meeting discussion. Do you want to start talking about that a little bit? Is that why you're here, Fletcher, or you?
Yeah, that's a, that's a big piece of it. Also, I have something to add, but I just wanted to figure, I have no idea how the logistics of this are shaking out.
At this point, Fletcher, what, what we've been told is how it would look like is that the boards and yourself with that, like a Fact TV would meet in a, in an auditorium such as the Bellas Falls Union High School. The meeting would, would be just those folks and everybody else would be through the, through the teleconferencing. And how that shakes out in, do you, do you read everything and, and it's just an informational meeting? Or, or is it a a question and answering? They're not sure how they're going to play that, play that out. So that's what we're waiting for is, is to see what they're going to allow for the moderator and the boards to get the information to the public and still have semi-form of a town meeting.
And how, and then the vote, the, the vote on everything would be by Australian ballot later, or would be?
That's the way they're leaning, but that's right now. They also talked about postponing town meeting for a couple of months. Karen Horn hacked it to death last night when she said that fiscal and calendar years were the same, one was in March and one was in, in July. Most towns around here are, are fiscal years and July first is the start of the new budget. So we have time to push it back a month or two before the actual budget kicks in, in case there was a hiccup that it had to go back into the taxpayers' hands to, to adjust the budget. So that's another discussion, another whole caveat to the, to the big picture, so.
So the only, the budget would be one issue. Voting the town officials, they would just continue to be town officials until they were actually voted?
That's correct.
That's true, yeah. Just trying to think of the.
Speaking of which, I, I have one thing I need to share. I got my petitions from Pauline today and I should let the board know that I do not expect to run for office again this year. So if you know anybody who wants to be a moderator or a town agent.
How many years have you been moderator, Fletcher?
Oh, twenty-some. But if, if my life goes according to plan, by twenty twenty-two, I won't be eligible to be your moderator because I won't be a resident of Westminster.
Okay.
Where will you be?
Putney. Big move. There was talk of, there was talk of Leicester, but I decided on Putney.
So it's, well, I won't ask any more questions right now.
Okay, well, thank you for that. I guess.
Yeah, I, you know, I gotta say, I'm kind of sad, but.
Yeah.
This is, in fact, I've been not talking about it up till now because I didn't really want to.
Yeah, yeah.
It's Alice Cajano. May I make a comment, please?
Please do.
You do not have to be a resident of Westminster to be a trustee of the Historical Society.
I'm glad for that. I actually am glad for that.
I hope, I hope that will sort of influence you one, one way.
I'm hoping to actually have more time to devote to that task.
Lovely. Thank you.
Okay, town meeting, anything else? We're just going to ponder this for a while, get more information?
It'll be ongoing, trust me. As things come in, we'll keep you.
I have no idea how, even if it's just the boards and me in an auditorium, if there's a hundred people online, how the heck do I identify them, recognize them? The logistics of this are way beyond me.
Yeah.
You would have to have a meeting moderator doing that, where, where your hands would be raised, but you wouldn't have to do it because there's no way you can do both.
I don't see how I can.
Right. So you'd have someone else saying, Fletcher, you have a question on, and, and they'd be recognized.
Good, because that's, that sounds better than me trying to flail around.
No, no, you couldn't do that. All right, manager's report.
A couple of brief things. The town offices will be closed December twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth in their entities and December thirty-first and January first in their entities. COVID nineteen grant, we did receive seven thousand, forty-eight dollars to cover our expenses such as the trash and recycling overture, some supplies and our cleaning services. Just an FYI, we did have an accident this morning. Carson Fulham broke his ankle while cutting wood from one of the recent storm timbers that had fallen on a side of one of our roads. It kicked back and struck him and he went to the hospital and he does have a, a hairline crack in his, in his ankle. That's it.
Hey, boards and commissions?
I have nothing else to report on that.
Other business? No other business? Well, date of the next meeting, we don't know what that's going to be yet.
I, I would propose that we do it for the sixteenth to give us pressure to get this meeting done.
Okay.
We don't set a date, we won't get it done.
Well, we have to get it done, so, okay, December sixteenth will be the next meeting. I'm assuming we'll probably still be zooming, so. Six thirty PM, unless things change. Okay.
Does that work for everybody?
Yep.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, okay. Okay. All right, so I guess next is we go into executive session. Yes. We don't need a motion for that because we already moved to do that.
We already moved it.
Okay.
Would we say goodbye to the public?